Good morning, everybody. Okay, just a message before we start. Thanks for joining us. This is a listen-only webinar. Please make sure your telephone, webcam, and/or microphone are muted. I know the slide says to turn it off, but I think muted makes more sense. During the webinar, if you're not able to hear audio, please do the following: check to see whether your speakers are on, plugged in, and the volume is turned up and not muted. Click the Meeting tab, then click the Manage My Settings, and then click the Auto-Setup Wizard, run through the wizard to test your equipment. So this is Bev Lutkemeyer. I'm the Director of Special Education Compliance, and thanks for joining this webinar to go over the proposed changes to the Missouri Part B State Plan. This webinar is being recorded. Let's see, somebody's not muted because I can hear myself in feedback. Thank you. This webinar is being recorded. The recording, the slides, and other documents from today's webinar will be posted as soon as possible. To find the recording, visit the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, or DESI webinar page at https://desi.moe.gov/communications/webinar/recorded and click on the Recorded Webinars button. This webinar is provided to you with closed captioning. Questions and answers from the first webinar that occurred on December 18 have been posted on the compliance webpage where you found the link for this webinar. It's just above the link for this webinar. The purpose for this public hearing is to allow stakeholders to hear about the proposed changes and ask clarifying questions in the chat window. Responses to the questions will be posted on the DESI webinar page along with the webinar. Comments on the proposed changes to the Missouri State Plan
Yeah.
for special education can be made from December 7, 2020 through January 15, 2021 and may be emailed to idea comments@desi.moe.gov. The Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, or DESI, Office of Special Education is the administrative agency responsible for ensuring the implementation of Part B of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA. The Missouri Part B program serves children and youth with disabilities from age 3 to 21. IDEA requires that the DESI have policies and/or procedures to ensure that IDEA is implemented and the rights of children and youth with disabilities and their families are protected. IDEA also requires that the DESI hold public hearings and provide opportunity for the general public to comment before adopting any new policy or procedure. Today's webinar will serve as the DESI's second public hearing related to proposed changes to the state regulations for Part B of the IDEA. Reminder: We will not be taking public comments during the hearings. Any comments must be submitted in writing to the Office of Special Education by close of business at 4:30 p.m. on January 15, 2021. The purpose of this hearing is to fulfill the public hearing requirements of Part B of the IDEA and give stakeholders an opportunity to ask any clarifying questions on the proposed changes to the Missouri State Plan, Part B of the IDEA. We're here today to date clarifying questions only. Also, we ask that you please submit your questions at this hearing to the proposed changes. Responses to the questions will post on the webinar page as stated in the previous slide. The following is an explanation of the hearing and the change process. We're holding two public hearings via webinar. The first was Friday, December 18, 2020, and the second is today, Tuesday, January 5, 2021. We are taking written comments on the proposed changes until the close of business on January 15, 2021. Following the January deadline for receiving written comments, the DESI will review all comments submitted and make one of three decisions about the proposed changes. One, we'll make the change as proposed. Two, make the change with revisions. Or three, not make the change. All comments received will be summarized and published on the DESI's webpage. The proposed changes will go to the State Board of Education. After the State Board of Education takes action on the proposed changes, they will be submitted to the Secretary of State's office for publication in the Missouri Register. The changes will become final after they have been published in the Missouri Register the required number of days. Comments may be submitted by mail to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Office of Special Education. Attention, Part B State Plan comments. PO Box 480, Jefferson City, Missouri. Or by email to idea comments@desi.moe.gov. On the subject line, place of attention, Part B State Plan comments. Or by fax to 573-751-3910. On the fax subject line, please place to the attention of Part B State Plan comments. I will read the summary of the proposed substantive changes. The summary will follow what is posted on the State Plan webpage I will pause periodically to read any questions that are received during the webinar. You may use the chat feature to ask your questions. Answers to your questions will be posted following the webinar. After I've gone through all the slides, we'll keep the webinar open as long as we're receiving questions or until 11:30. We will now begin the public hearing for the proposed changes to the Missouri Part B State Plan. Regulation 3 covers identification and evaluation. On page 21 in Regulation 3, we're proposing to add "and" Human Services to the name listed for the Department of Health. This change is being proposed to update the current name for the state agency, Department of Health and Human Services. The next proposed change is in Regulation 3 on page 26. Proposing to change the description of intellectual disability to require two or more familiar adults provide information regarding the child's adaptive behavior functioning through adaptive behavior assessment results, and to specify that one of the familiar adults should be a parent when possible. It would read, "Adaptive behavior assessments should be completed by two or more adults who are familiar with the child's functional performance, including a parent or guardian when possible." The proposed change is to clarify that adaptive behavior functioning should be established by more than one familiar adult, and parents or guardians could contribute to the adaptive behavior assessments. The next proposed change in Regulation 3 is on pages 26 and 27. Change description of intellectual disability from describing adaptive behavior functioning as "consistent with measured cognitive ability to read as follows: The student displays significant deficits in adaptive behavior functioning when results from two raters using a standardized adaptive behavior assessment..." I mean, it didn't... Let me start that over. "The student displays significant deficits in adaptive behavior functioning when results from two raters using a standardized adaptive behavior instrument produce composite scores two standard deviations below the mean. When the criteria is met on one composite score, a second score allowing for the standard error of measurement may be accepted." The proposed change is to require the same two standard deviation discrepancy for adaptive behavior as is used for cognitive ability, and since more than one familiar adult will provide information through an assessment tool, allow results from one of the assessments to meet criteria using standard error of measurement, if less than two standard deviations from the mean, but within the standard error of measurement. The next proposed change is on page 27. Change the description of intellectual disability to include the use of observations to support the description of adverse educational impact. It would read, "The description of adverse educational impact is supported by information gained through a comprehensive evaluation, including observations of the student's academic and functional performance completed in a variety of educational settings." The proposed wording is added to describe how information from a comprehensive education evaluation, including observations, should be used to support the description of adverse educational impact in the evaluation reports for children identified using the intellectual disability criteria. The next proposed change in Regulation 3 is on page 28. It's proposed is to change the description of other health impairment, or OHI, to include the use of observations to support the description of adverse educational impact. It would read, "The description of adverse educational impact is supported by information gained through a comprehensive evaluation, including observations of the student's academic and functional performance completed in a variety of educational settings." The change is to clarify that information from a comprehensive education evaluation, including observations, should be used to support the description of adverse educational impact in evaluation reports for children identified using the OHI eligibility criteria. The next proposed change in Regulation 3 would read as follows. This is on page 39. "The group making these decisions may conduct its review without a meeting. The public agency must administer tests and other evaluation methods to produce the data needed to make an eligibility determination and develop an IEP as listed in 1 through 4 above." The proposed change of "shall" to "must" is done to align with Federal Regulation 34 CFR 300.305c and clarified that administration of tests and other evaluation methods occurs after the team reviews existing data to determine what information is needed. The next proposed change is on page 40 in Regulation 3. Proposes to change the description of the synthesis of information from the evaluation report to read as follows. Synthesis of information from the evaluation that demonstrates consideration was given to all areas of functioning. Adding the wording "that demonstrates" improves the quality of the synthesis of information. The evaluation report should include information about all areas of functioning sufficient to support the eligibility decision and describe educational concerns. The next proposed change is in Regulation 3, page 40. The proposed change is to add wording to the description of the basis for making the determination of eligibility for a disability in the evaluation report to read as follows. Basis for making the determination of eligibility for disability, including the disability's adverse effect on the student's education and the student's need for specialized instruction. The proposed change is to clarify that the determination of eligibility must include a description of the disability's adverse effect and the student's need for specialized instruction. The next proposed change to Regulation 3 is on page 41. The proposed change is to add more detail to the reference to a preceding section to read as follows. "If the public agency selected methods 2 or 3 for identifying children ages 3 through 5, not kindergarten age eligible, described above, they may either." The proposed change to include the wording from the section for identifying children aged 3 to 5, not kindergarten age eligible, so that the reference is clear. The next proposed change in Regulation 3 is also on page 41. And it's to remove wording describing the use of any disability category other than YCD or Young Child with a Developmental Delay from option A for continuing eligibility for young children. The reason for removing it is because the wording's not necessary because option B includes using any disability category other than YCD, and districts may use either option A or option B. So the final proposed change to Regulation 3 is on page 42. The proposed change would add more detail to the reference to a preceding section to read as follows. "If the public agency selected method 1 for identifying children ages 3 through 5, not kindergarten age eligible, described above, all children will continue to be identified as eligible using any disability category other than Young Child with a Developmental Delay, YCD, including the wording from the section for identifying children aged 3 through 5, not kindergarten age eligible." So the reference is clear. The next changes are in Regulation 8, the Personnel Standards. On page 99, it's proposed to add verbiage to describe that all paraprofessionals, even those who hold teaching certificates, must receive the minimum number of hours of training described in this section. And the proposed change is to clarify that all paraprofessionals require training, so they're properly prepared to meet the needs of the students they serve. And the reference is 34 CFR 300.156B2, small Roman numeral I, 3. The next change in Regulation 8 being proposed is on page 101. It's to add the title, responsibilities, educational qualifications, and certificates or licensure requirements for an assistant behavior analyst. It's proposed to add assistant behavior analyst responsibilities, qualifications, and licensing requirements to meet the requirements necessary for Medicaid reimbursement for ABA services. The next proposed change in Regulation 8 is found on pages 101 and 102. The proposed change is to add the title, responsibilities, educational qualifications, and certificates or license requirements for a behavior analyst. This is being proposed to add behavior analyst responsibilities, qualifications, and licensing requirements to meet the requirements necessary for Medicaid reimbursement for ABA services. The next proposed change in Regulation 8 is found on page 103. Add to the responsibilities of paraprofessionals. And this is to clarify that a paraprofessional can work under the supervision of a licensed, as well as a certificated, professional, and expanded responsibilities to include activities associated with licensed professionals. The final proposed change to Regulation 8 is found on page 105. The proposed change would add the title, responsibilities, educational qualifications, and certificates or license requirements for a registered behavior technician. And to add a registered behavior technician, responsibilities, qualifications, and licensing requirements to meet the requirements necessary for Medicaid reimbursement for ABA services. The last proposed change is found in Regulation 16 for State Operated Programs on page 156. And the proposed change is to wording to refer to the appropriate State Board Operated Programs. This is made to correct an error made in a previous revision that named MSSD instead of MSB and MSD. Please ask any clarifying questions by typing in the chat window. I see there are a number of questions added to the chat window. Reminder that we're not taking public comments during the hearing, and comments should be submitted in writing to the Office of Special Education no later than the end of the business day on January 15, 2021. I'll pause now and read the questions in the chat box. I'll put up this next slide that has the... all the information for providing comments to any of the changes that we covered today. So there's a question that says, "Overall composite scores only? Are will index scores be acceptable?" And then there's two comments from Katja, so I'm going to combine them. So Regulation 3 pages 26 through 27c, "Consistent with measured cognitive ability." The adaptive surveys are very... The adaptive surveys are very subjective and often overly sensitive. If scores cannot be collected by two raters or the SEM on more than one score is two standard deviations below, would this be acceptable? Within Regulation 3, why was the verbiage to describe how information from a comprehensive education evaluation, including observations, should be used to support the description of adverse educational impact in the evaluation reports for children only applied to children using ID and OHI eligibility criteria? Within Regulation 3, do tests and assessments have to be administered for every triennial evaluation? Or can the group review and determine if there is need? For adaptive behavior scores, what if you have two school personnel complete the adaptive behavior forms and a parent complete the forms? If both the schools' raters' scores are more than two standard deviations below the mean, but the parent's score is not, is that acceptable or must all three meet? Regulation 3, page 39, changed to must and the deletion of as may be needed. When outside testing has been completed, but additional observations are needed, is it still acceptable with the new verbiage to not engage in further assessment in all areas, but just those areas that are still needed? What is the link to the questions asked during the December 18 hearing? Okay, thank you for providing the answer Katja, the link. Assessments should not necessarily mean direct testing, but rather as per standards and indicators 200.340, review of existing evaluation data, which may include outside private evals and determine what additional data, if any, are needed. Direct testing may not always be needed, but assessment may include review of existing data already available. Will the expanded responsibilities for paraprofessionals include participation in IEP meetings? Our district selected method three for determining eligibility for young children. Will we still be able to identify a child five years old before August 1st as YCD? Regarding assistant behavior analyst changes, is the proposed change exclusive to Medicaid reimbursements? Page 40, is the synthesis to be documented? Marilyn, you may put in a comment in the chat about what it means to be exclusive to Medicaid reimbursement. Looks like it's five minutes after 11:00. I'll leave this webinar open until 11:30. About every five minutes or when a new comment comes up, I will unmute and read it. So please feel free to keep adding questions until I close the webinar at 11:30. So Marilyn included a follow-up to her question. Does the proposed change apply if Medicaid is not involved? Thank you. There's a new question. Will expanded responsibilities for paraprofessionals include being allowed to attend IEP meetings when invited by a parent to attend? There are two new questions. This is my first time attending. How and when will we receive a response to our questions? This is one I can't answer. It's in the previous slide. It'll be posted with the recorded webinar. The link will be on the same page where you went to sign on to this webinar. So there's a page just for proposed changes to Part B State Plan on the compliance website. Can attendance at IEP meetings be considered training for a paraprofessional? There's a new question. What if you cannot obtain two adaptive behavior rating scales after attempting slash not received or the limited availability of reliable reporters? There's another new question. OHI, page 28. Is the proposed change in a variety of educational settings limited to public school facilities? Are remote or home setting during COVID considered an educational setting? It's 11:20 a.m. The webinar will remain open for 10 more minutes. We've received an additional question. Paraprofessionals, when a paraprofessional is under the supervision of a certificated teacher. May the paraprofessional assist a student in person? Parent who is learning at home parent during COVID when the district is performing remotely or in a hybrid schedule? There's a new question. And then answer to question, so January is myth of the month from the DESI compliance section will cover paraprofessionals. It'll be posted to the DESI website early next week. New question. Personnel standards, can paraprofessionals be allowed to view the goals in an IEP? We received another question, it's a follow up to the preceding question, which was compare professionals be allowed to view the goals in an IEP? And if so, how often and when? There are two minutes left before we close the webinar, so if you have any questions, please add them. Thanks. It's 11:30 a.m. This concludes our public hearing on the proposed changes to the part B state plan. Thank you for participating.